Good afternoon and welcome to the work session for Greeley Evan School District, Sixth Board of Education. It is June 10th, and we just finished with an executive session, so it's 4:50 in the afternoon, and this meeting will now come to order. This work session anyway. And Ms. Lemon, will you start by calling the roll for us, please?
Director Zari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First off, on our agenda is our calendar review and community engagement, and our calendar is not nearly as full as it was the last time we met. We do have one graduation coming up, a gap graduation on June 22nd. The PLC Foundation Summer Solstice Breakfast on the 20th. And those look like all we have in the month of June. A couple of things in July, but the second one of those is District Six Leadership Team Kickoff, so we've got a while, and then we'll be kicking off the next school year. Anything you guys know that's not on that calendar that we need to be aware of that pertains to all of us? All right, we'll proceed to board member comments and reports, and we'll start with Ms. Sullivan.
I think the graduations were amazing to go to, a lot of good stories and experiences with all the students, and I was, yeah, it is. Is that better? Oh goodness, that just echoes in here, doesn't it? No, it was just an honor to be able to attend all the graduations and meet some of the families and hear some of their stories and the triumphs and the tribulations, and I just really enjoyed their speeches and whatnot because they were really heartfelt, and you could tell they put time and effort into it because they were committed to their graduations. So it was neat to see, and all of the scholarships were awarded, and I'm just amazed at the dollar amount. So proud of our students, how they finished strong this year.
Thank you, Taylor. Brenda?
Yes, I just wanted to share some of those sentiments that Taylor just expressed, that graduation season's very special, getting to share the joy and excitement of a really milestone day with our students and their families and our staff really never gets old. Two weeks ago, we also got to celebrate Dr. Stacy Dattery's dedication to our district for almost 20 years at her farewell party, and that was pretty cool. And last but not least, I did want to mention that two days ago, my family and I got to attend the Second Annual Greeley Pride Event at Ames Community College. I think everyone who attended was actually really surprised at how many people were there. So proud of Greeley today, and really impressed by the magnitude of the event. They had about 60 vendors. It was a really cool event. And with that, I wanted to mention that while last year, I talked about that my family and I put up a pride flag on our front porch to show our neighbors and friends that we're allies of the LGBTQIA+ community. Last year, we actually decided to keep our flag up permanently, so it's been flying all year long, because while pride is only celebrated in June, we wanted to show our love and acceptance of the LGBTQIA+ community year-round. I've learned that when it comes to being an ally and friend of marginalized groups, it's not enough to be a bystander to silently feel comfortable that you're not homophobic or transphobic. It's important to instead be an upstander. An upstander is someone who recognizes injustice and uses their personal strengths to create change. And what do I mean by injustice? Well, the Human Rights Campaign has actually declared a national state of emergency in our country for the LGBTQ+ members as elections ramp up across our country, and more than 75 anti-LGBTQIA+ laws have been passed in the U.S. just this past year. So I wanted to take a moment today to do my small part in being the change that I want to see in the world by wishing our District Six LGBTQ+ students, families, and staff a happy Pride Month, and share with you some written comments from our own community members who attended the festival at Ames this weekend on what pride means to them. So it was a whiteboard, and people got to just kind of write comments on the whiteboard, so they were short, but here's a few. One was respecting everyone, not afraid, safety, community, authenticity, lots of kindness, love is love, and deserving more than just tolerance. With that, I promise you as a school board director, I'll personally continue to advocate for a welcoming and inclusive culture in our buildings for all of our students, family, and staff in D6, and also a shameless plug for Greeley's upcoming Downtown Pride Fest hosted by the Greeley Downtown Development Authority on Friday, June 21st. There's going to be live music, vendors, food trucks, and more, and again, happy pride.
Thank you, Brenda. Kyle?
Yeah, just mainly been busy with the graduations. They're all really good. We got a cream of the crop group of kids graduating from D6, and it's just fun to see them go on their different ways, so looking forward to summer break.
Thank you, Kyle. Doran?
It was an interesting perspective. I had the opportunity to attend the Montfort Kindergarten Extravaganza and see the little ones running around, and then almost one, almost a day exactly later, to see seniors walk across a stage and graduate. It was really awesome to see that, kind of felt like a bookend on one side and then the other. So yeah, I totally agree. Graduations, super, super positive opportunities, and just so proud of the kids, and you know, I extend my congratulations to all the parents that have had graduates come through the system. So very, very good. Looking forward to the summer.
Thank you, Doran. Natalie?
Well, I got to experience graduation season as a parent this year, and just my daughter started as a kindergartner at Chapelo, went to Fred Chartis, and graduated from Greeley Central, and had amazing teachers, staff, just every person that touched her life. It was really wonderful, and she got to reflect back on that. She made little bookmarks that said, "Thank you for being a part of my story." And so I know she just feels so supported. I mean, some of the nuggets of wisdom she got sometimes from even teachers that she didn't have as a classroom teacher. So I'm very proud to have my first graduate from District Six and another one in two years. And yeah, it's always such a wonderful celebration. Got to go to a lot of parties because, of course, this year we knew more graduates than other years, but that was wonderful. Wanted just to mention my deep condolences for the Bredarius family and the passing of Dr. Bruce Bredarius, who I really got to know last year during the campaign season, and just what a champion for education, and just generally soft-spoken, beautiful-hearted man. So I look forward to celebrating his life with everyone in the future. Let's see, I also just wanted to make a personal statement about Pride Month, which is a time to celebrate the vibrancy, diversity, and resilience of the LGBTQ+ community. I stand in solidarity with our students, staff, and families who identify as LGBTQ+ recognizing both the progress that has been made and the challenges that remain. My commitment as an ally is rooted in the belief that everyone, all means all, deserves to live authentically and with dignity. I strive to educate myself continually, listen actively, and ensure that the voices of the LGBT community are heard. Advocacy is not confined to a single month. It is an ongoing endeavor to challenge prejudice, support equal rights, and foster inclusive spaces. Pride Month is a remember of the power of unity and the importance of standing together against discrimination and hatred. By embracing love, acceptance, and understanding, we can help create a school district and community where everyone is free to be themselves.
Thank you, Natalie. And yeah, graduations were, they're always wonderful. They're so much fun to see how proud our students are, how proud our parents are, how proud our teachers are of their students, and just wonderful celebrations. Like Natalie, I got to be there for, I had a son graduating this year, as I did last year, and as I did the year before. It's been three years in a row that we've had a child graduate from District Six, and like Natalie said, the teachers that we've had, the administrators, the counselors, the coaches, they've just, they've been amazing for our kids, and we could not be more appreciative of all that our education community has done for our students, our kids. It's a wonderful thing to get to be onstage with your child when they graduate, so that was a lot of fun. I did get, actually, to get to do something else as well. I got to go to Greeley Central to Chuck Luce's class and observe and help evaluate oral presentations that were being done, and so we don't get to do a lot of those kind of things this time of year, but that was a lot of fun, too. And I think that's about all I have for tonight. Again, we do mourn the loss of Dr. Bredarius, and in the, just so you guys know, in the board meeting, we'll have a moment of silence to honor him, and so, but that's all that I have. And so, moving right along in our agenda, we're to our proposed budget, right on time, 5 o'clock. Let's see, Ms. Sponsler joining us. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you need to do by way of introduction, or can we just hand it over to Ms. Sponsler?
All right, thank you very much. I have had the opportunity to meet with each of you individually and talk about the budget, so I think that any questions you had have hopefully been addressed, but I wanted to take the opportunity to just hit a few of the high points, so hopefully our clicker So to start off with the key legislation that was passed this year, there were really two different School Finance Acts passed. The first one is what governs this year, so that was Senate Bill 188, and that's the Public School Finance Act. That continues the funding, just as it has been for decades, and we will go through that one more year. And then House Bill 1448 was also passed, and that makes the new public school funding formula effective a year from now. So we have one more year of the current formula, and then we switch to the new formula, and when I met with you, I showed each of you kind of a comparison of the complexity of the current formula versus hopefully the simplicity of the future formula. Okay, there we go. So this year, the School Finance Act increases the per pupil funding by $735 is what's projected. That accounts for inflation of 5.2%, and then it also eliminates that budget stabilization factor. So this is the first year in 15 years that we do not have a budget stabilization factor that is reducing our funding. Together, those two things result in a 6.8% increase in per pupil funding. So revenue, and remember, we have multiple funds in the district, so this slide shows all of the funds. Later, I will talk about just the general fund, but all of our revenue sources, you can see that still the state equalization, which is what the School Finance Act is also known as, state equalization is still the largest piece of that pie there. So 41% of our revenue is coming from the state through state equalization. We have 19% coming from local property taxes for operations, 7% coming in from the mill levy override, and then various other funding sources. Interestingly, I think the federal grant revenue does not make up as much as people might think, but that is totaling 8%. And that has gone down with the ESSER funding going away this year. It used to be a bigger piece of that pie last year, but this year it's reduced. So appropriations by fund, the general fund, of course, is the biggest fund, and this is the fund that we have the most discretion over, and so as board members, you get to have input into how we spend these dollars. Agency funds are just funds that we hold for other entities, and we pass those through, typically scholarships. Debt service funds, those are the bond debt that we have. Special revenue funds, that's a funny name for grant funds, so that is our grant fund. It's also our food service fund, and we have a few other special revenue funds that fall in there, but those are the two biggest. And then our capital projects funds. So that piece of pie is also shrinking as we spend down our bond projects, and so this year, we're looking at around $45 million left to spend in our bond and capital projects. So now go to the general fund. And so, as you all know, we are funded based on our student count, and so this year, we're projecting an increase of 255 students. That's about 1.2%. We don't think we will see huge growth in the near future, but we do think we'll see incremental growth, and that's just because we know that Greeley is still a fairly affordable place to live, and so families are coming into the community where other districts in the Denver metro area, Boulder Valley, some of those other districts, it's just really cost prohibitive, and so they are seeing significant declines in their enrollment. We have two pieces of this pupil count, so our non-charter schools are projected to be about 17,238, and charter schools about 5,033. That might be a little bit high, but in working with our charters, they are trying to grow their enrollment, a few of them, and so that's what we projected. So here's a look at the per pupil funding, and this comes from the School Finance Act directly. And so this year, we were funded at $10,732 per student, and we're projecting that to be $11,467. So since COVID hit in 2020, you can see that we have steadily increased our per pupil funding these past five years, and that's just been a huge impact on our system because it has given us funds that we could do some things that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to. From 2015 through 2020, you can see we did have increases, but they were pretty nominal, and so those were the hard budget years. We had harder budget years in 2009, but it didn't really get much better until recently. So for general fund revenue, we're projecting this year to come in about $323 million. Again, that line is trending upwards. And this slide here, I pointed this out when I met with each of you, but I wanted to point out just how much the School Finance Act influences our funding. And so 86% of our district funding is coming directly from School Finance Act. Now, School Finance Act has three different components to it, so on the right-hand side, the state of Colorado contributes 59%, local property taxes contribute 25%, and then specific ownership taxes make up 2%. So all of those things together are governed through School Finance Act. So when people are down at the Capitol and they are talking with legislators, it's really, really important that we advocate to support our schools, because this drives our funding and this drives how we can operate our schools. The mill levy override makes up 9% of our general fund revenue, and then we have indirect and other and services that we charge back for charter schools. Together, those make up 5%. Now, I get asked a lot, what is indirect and other, and a lot of times, that is things like oil and gas royalties, or if we have leases. Sometimes we have E-rate money that comes into our general fund, so those are the kinds of things that fall into that category. And for expenses, I don't think this is a surprise to people, but of our total general fund expenses, salaries and benefits make up 80% of our budget. So when we have those rough budget years, you can see why people get impacted and why positions get cut. The purchase services and supplies and materials, you know, that's still 20% of our budget, but those are things that are typically really things that we can't cut. So utilities, for example, that would be a significant one, just basic school supplies, copy paper, copiers that we lease, those kinds of things. And so this is another way to look at how expenditures are split out, same kind of pot of money, but just broken out a little bit differently. So CDE has what they call their chart of accounts, and these are accounts that we have to use. This is how they get information that they then report for state reporting or for federal reporting, and so these categories are defined by CDE, but of course, you would expect to see most of our funding going into instruction. Operations and maintenance makes up 11% of our money, and then other support services would be like information technology, Teresa's Department of Communications, those types of service departments. Student support would be people that support students, so a lot of our special ed itinerant staff would fall into that category. School administration, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, transportation, business services, and then general administration would be all of you. And then, this is my donut chart, and we talked about this when we met, but here, I want to point out that most of our expenses really do go to schools, and each of these categories represents not only staff salaries, supplies, those kinds of things, it would also include utilities, building operation costs, and those kind of expenses. So elementary schools, K8s, middle, high schools, those are most of that donut there. Other departments like special education, we budget for a lot of those services centrally, but those people really do work out in the schools, and so those are people that are directly supporting schools. District-wide expenses, those are expenses mostly for substitute teachers that I also budget for centrally, and then as those subs work in different buildings, the expenses go out to each of those schools. Let's see, I think this is my last slide here, but general fund reserves, the purple part of each of those bars, that's really the money that you all have available to spend, and that's kind of what has been left over year after year that hasn't been spent. When we had ESSER dollars come into the district, that was a pressure relief valve for us, and so we were able to start growing that fund balance. That was a huge benefit for us when we passed our bond. It allowed us to have excellent credit ratings, it helped us get solid financing for our bond issue. So having that purple bar, that size, is helpful, but you do have to balance how much do you want to have kind of tucked away for a rainy day, and how much do you need to put out into schools to support the students. And so you can see that we are projecting that to decline this next year. We're projecting about $14.5 million to be spent of that reserve. That still leaves us a little over two months of operating expenses in our fund balance, but we feel like it's appropriate to spend these dollars on one-time expenditures for things like property purchases. We have a transfer to our health insurance fund to get that started, so those kinds of expenditures are appropriate uses of that fund balance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If you were to compare, if you were to compare our budget with other schools, is it pretty typical for the 80% to be on staff?
Yes, staff is definitely the biggest expense for school districts. I think that we're maybe a little bit higher than some, but probably a little bit lower than some also, so.
And then you addressed about spending down the bond, or we needed to set some of that money aside for the district building downtown, or did we find if insurance will cover that?
We believe that insurance will cover that. We do think there may be some expenses that we'll have to use some of our fund balance for, but I think we're a long way from having to make that decision at this point. Good question.
I would just say, I like the way that we go through the budget individually so that we have lots of opportunity to ask questions, and for anyone watching at home, the budget is online. It is all beautiful diagrams like that. I think it's pretty easy to understand, actually, even if you're not a finance person, because Ms. Sponsler puts it in a way that's visually, you know, lots of different ways, the donut or the graph. And then towards the back, I always appreciate perusing through the demographic information of each school. It's just kind of fun to see exactly which students, what our community looks like, and who we're serving in each school. So again, thank you for such an amazing document and for the opportunity to sit down and really pour through it. Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to point out that we all have gotten a chance to sit with Megan and go through this information individually, so it's not that we don't have questions, it's that we've already gotten a lot of our questions answered. And I will say, I'm really proud of the fact that I heard, it was an administrator comment once, that District Six tends to run lean as far as the admin building, those, you know, higher-paid leadership positions, and I'm proud of that, and I think that's because of Dr. Deirdre Pilch's leadership, that she wants to make sure that a lot of that money is being spent on teachers and inside of our school buildings, and you know, just runs a tight ship and makes sure that if there's superflutive positions, that we're not spending money on things that we don't need, basically, so.
Megan, I had a just question as I was adding up numbers as you were going through at this time, because you always present it in so many different ways that sometimes I get confused like which numbers go with which way that you're presenting. But so our general fund is $354 million, and then we have the special revenue fund that's $50 million, and the debt service fund that's $26 or $27 million, then the capital projects, $45 million. When you add it all up, that's about $477.
Right.
But our budget's $490 million.
Yes.
So where's that other 13? Where can I find? I couldn't find it.
Yep, that's a great question. Technically, we have to appropriate the money that we transfer from other funds.
Okay.
So that makes up that difference.
Okay. I knew there was a good answer for it.
Yep.
I just couldn't find it.
It's one of those weird accounting rules.
Appreciate it. And again, thank you, as Natalie said, for anybody watching and who wants to understand the district, and this is a great document to look through. It breaks down just how many students we have and the impact of this budget stabilization factor that you mentioned, and it breaks it down by any number of ways, but also by schools and how our schools spend their money as well, so just loads of information, and thank you for all the work on this.
Thank you, and that can be found on the Financial Transparency link, if anyone's looking for that.
Are there any other questions from Ms. Sponsler? All right, well, we will let you go. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And we are on to the debriefing of our work session. So we started with Taylor. Doran, we'll start with you.
Well, obviously, just another big shout-out to Megan and her team for all the work they do compiling the budget. As a new board member, I really appreciated her time that she spent in answering several of my questions, because it is very confusing. There's a lot of numbers out there and a lot to take in, so I just really appreciate the time that our district leadership team takes in helping me at least understand what's going on. And again, reflection on graduations is really positive, so thank you.
Thank you, Doran. Kyle?
Yeah, just a big thanks to Megan and the team again. Like Doran said, the budget, always a big hurdle to get through with the state issues that they throw at us and delays in our timing and the issues that they throw at us and delays and her timing and the amount of work she has to do with the amount of unknowns that she has until right at the very end. So I'm sure that this is a big weight off her, her shoulders, too. So, um, happy to see the, the, uh, School Finance Formula going in the right direction finally for us. Pretty exciting times to be at D6, in my opinion. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kyle. Brenda?
Yeah, I just want to echo Kyle's comment about an exciting time to be in D6, and that was how I started my meeting with Megan. Like, I'm really excited about this meeting in six years, once we, um, gradually get all the money from the Scoo- the New School Finance Formula. So, um, yes, just proud of the administration of our money, feel really relieved that Megan is in charge of that. It, you know, Megan is just such an excellent administrator, um, and just does her job so well that it, I think for all seven of us, gives us a lot of peace of mind that, um, that the money is going to where it needs to be going. So, so thank you, Megan.
Taylor?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I don't really have too much more to add, but, um, yes, thank you for always taking the time, Megan, to, um, assist with this, and, um, you're very valued within our district, so we appreciate your time and efforts that you put in.
Natalie?
Same. Shout out to the finance team and Ms. Sponsler, and, yeah, great to hear everybody's comments on graduation as well.
Uh, ditto, uh, to the finance team, but I also say, uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. Fall for leading us through the exec session, um, on the most policy, um, procedures that we, that we need to go through tonight. So, uh, we always feel very prepared for our, our business meetings because of the great, uh, the great work that we get in our, in our work session and explanations that we get in, in work session, but also, and as you guys have mentioned, in those, uh, those individual meetings that we get to have, uh, go through the budget with Ms. Sponsler. So, and thanks, everyone. Thank you, guys, for, uh, for your work as well. And our work session is adjourned. We'll see everyone back here at 6 o'clock for a business meeting.